Good evening, welcome to the new building and to the August twenty first. And commission, we are recommending body. Decisions that colleagues and I make tonight. Our planning department staff is going to present each of the applications recommendations they have made. The public will be asked. Representatives will come up and blast public. Favor of the project come up. That portion of the median. And we'll ask for anybody. Position to the. About forty minutes. That all those the public comments. Bring it up here. Colleagues have questions for. Playing department or the publisher will. Once we've discussed death. We'll. For a motion. The benefit of that twenty minutes time conservative. Favor or against, but not to repeat. Do with them, you could say. You arrive at the podium, please give your name and your address. Write your comments to us. All that.
Make a motion.
First new business.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, your first item is reason P twenty three zero one three eight. Uh, this is Hale Holdings LLC. You'll notice on the location map just to the west of city of Bogart. It is parcel B zero one zero six one. And you have the aerial photograph on the screen and then in your packets as well. It's currently zoned B one. In the corridor commercial character area. And the request is a reason on the property from B one to B two highway business district for Hales Heating and Cooling LLC and office rental space. This is the concept plan that you have in your application packets. This is the concept plan from rezone five four five two five. That was the original B one zoning which showed a gas station. At the time. These are representative photos that were submitted with the application. And staff recommends conditional approval with our standard three conditions. And then number four, the applicant shall install buffers as required per section eight oh six table eight point one. A fifty foot landscape buffer must be installed along both the east and west property lines due to adjacent less intense zoning to the eastern west of said property. Additionally, the required stormwater management basin and any required onsite sewer drain lines shall not be located entirely or partially within any required buffer. Number five, the driveway should be shifted to align with the central parking area between the two buildings to enhance access by employees in the public. In addition to the required landscape strip, the service area at the rear of the building of building one shall be screened from view from Atlanta Highway by a minimum of ten foot wide evergreen buffer. That is a minimum of six foot in height at the time of planting and meeting the standards set forth in section eight oh eight of the UDC. Thank you.
Okay, so at this time I'll ask the petitions.
I am Trey Hale, the owner of Hales Heating and Cooling, and my my objective over there is to relocate my office from Watkinsville over to the Bogart area. And have a potential. Office space next door to it for anybody else or me in the future. There, there won't be a whole lot of traffic in and out. It'd be more of an office space for my office ladies that'll go in there and operate. Um, it'll be a little bit of storage for my heating and air equipment in the back inside the building, nothing outside. I think uh, it's a very, very good location right there on the on the on the highway. I just, I I hope y'all allow me to move it up. Thank you.
Bring the sign in sheet I have.
Hey, Brian Kimsey, address ten thirty Townside Lake Court Bishop. Uh, we're the agent for uh, Mr. Hale. He did a great job of explaining what we're doing out there planning to do. Really just from a technical standpoint, uh, there's no objection to the to the condition set by the planning department. Uh, we have no reason to believe that's going to deter or distract from anything that we're planning to do out there. And all the requirements we met from the city, I mean, the county requirements, the George Stormwater Management Manual we met for the stormwater requirements. Um, this site is not serviced by water and sewer, so that will be on-site septic and on-site well. Uh, that we use for the for the the business. And outside that, I'll be available for questions if you have any.
Don't have to be signed up to. Sad one.
No, the the use that he's requesting, um, the heating and heating is serving.
Okay.
Heating and air, right? Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, again, your your next case is rezone P twenty three zero one three nine. Anderson Wells, uh, two LLC. This is located. Partially in the city of Bogart and partially in the county. The majority is in the city of Bogart. And so the request. That oh, currently it's. Parcel B zero one zero seven two K. And KB, which is the Bogart portion of seventy two K. And B zero one zero seven two T. That's the small. The small parcel down at the the lower right of the photo. It's currently zoned R one in the city of Bogart and both parcels. Uh, in the unincorporated portion, it is zoned AG. This is in the um, technology gateway, not suburban neighborhood, but the the technology. Door door gateway door. And the reason request is a reasonable portion of property from R one city of Bogart. And AG in O'Cona County to industrial in the city of Bogart. And OBP in O'Cona County. To bring it into compliance for the ongoing unpermitted uses on the property. This is the concept plan that you have in your application package showing the portion proposed to be rezoned. That is the. Uh, the portion. Coming down from Aiken Road down to the larger portion of the property here. The R one along Aiken Road with existing residential houses will remain R one. In the city. And staff recommends conditional approval. Uh, for both the city portion and the unincorporated portion. With our three standard conditions and then number four, the owner shall convey water and sewer easements as required by O'Cona County. And number five, the owner shall install a twenty foot landscape buffer along University Parkway, Highway three sixteen. Frontage that meets the design standards per section eight oh eight of the O'Cona County Unified Development Board.
Good evening, Mark Campbell, Carter Engineering, ten ten Commerce Drive, Bogart. Appreciate y'all taking the time to consider this tonight. It's certainly an interesting request. Um, thank God and the planning department has been a great job kind of summarizing that. That's approximately thirty acres. Uh, it's right on the the boundary there at the Bogart city limits. Approximately ten acres on the northern side. Where there are existing residences would remain residential. Uh, there's a pond on the property and that actually. Provides a pretty good bifurcation between north and south. So the southern approximately twenty acres. Uh, would be rezoned to allow non-residential uses. So the existing property owner, when they purchased this property, if you go back and look at some some aerial photos. Uh, what existed on the southern side of that lot. Near three sixteen were chicken houses. They've removed the chicken houses. They parked some. FEMA emergency trailers on there for storage. They have a very successful business and those trailers are not allowed in a residentially zoned property. So uh, this is an an application that you may not normally see where there's no proposed buildings. There's no proposed development. The proposal is to rezone the property in order to allow what is currently existing to come into compliance and and staff's done a great job of. Of helping us with that. Uh, there is water available to the property. As you can see, there's access from Aiken Road as well. There's not sewer currently available to the property, but. It sure would be nice if there were sewer available at some point in time in the future. I know the property to the west is uh, is own uh. Owned by the O'Cona County Industrial Development Authority, uh, about fifty acres there with the OBP zoning. So. If you've got any questions, like I say, I understand it is somewhat of a different request in front of you tonight. I'll be happy to answer anything you might have.
Don't have any additional people that want to speak.
My name is Jim Thompson. I live at ten thirty one St. Andrews Court. In Rockinfield. Uh, I run power building products have. For years and years since nineteen seventy seven, we've been out there. But I own a duplex that has a fence between it and the park. And my uh, is a good landlord rather than bad one. I want to protect my people that rent from me. So if we could keep that part. That is. Part. Yeah, if if we could just keep the part. Uh, art one. Up where. See, I live, my duplex sits back off the road. It's about fourteen hundred square feet on both sides of that duplex. So it's a big duplex. I've got tenants have been there a good while. Uh, but I in protection of them. If something other than R one is ever created. Uh, by the owners. Uh, I would request that we make sure that. Uh, we either put a line of Leyland Cypress, you know, eight to ten feet down the length of that. Property that divide that separates. The true R one and that are one. Of the of the property. Just that's for a privacy buffer. But main thing coming tonight, I wanted to learn. All the facts about what always going to be done. I thank you for your time.
We can't exactly address your question, but we'll see if it comes up. All right, so Jim was the only one that signed up in opposition. Put it up to anybody else that wants to make any. Comments on the project in opposition.
I I don't know off the top of my head, but it's it's I believe this location. And the storage is back here. So. I'm I'm assuming that is his. I I can't really read it, but I'm assuming that lot is his. Is that right? There. It's a good way. Do that again, please. Can you zoom in further? Can you zoom in further? Okay, that's yes.
Guess the question that you're asking is do. Fire a buffer between driveway.
That that use is not changing in that location, there'll be a driveway, the existing driveway will be maintained. The actual use that's changing is is in the rear. So with that is in the city of Bogart. And so we will check on that and then verify that, but and and that would be addressed based on their ordinance at the time of development. Right, that's right.
Oh, you're getting that? Okay, sorry, didn't mean to. So for guy, is there anything that limits?
No.
Hey, there's whatever's on the drawing, but.
They could expand that further north, yes, that's right.
Who else? I've closed the public.
Yeah, I've got a question. What was the, what was?
It was a code enforcement action, they had moved the trailers on there without a. Permit and without proper zoning. And and so to mitigate that or to to correct that, they've come forward to ask for a rezone to industrial to allow that use that's being proposed.
I got forgot, I got.
It's it's been for a while, I apologize, I don't have that right in front of me, but it I think it's been many years.
Year. How many years they've been keeping?
I believe that's relatively recent, no, I think that's relatively recent, like I say, when they first bought it, it was chicken houses there, so then they removed the chicken houses. Then my understanding and because I didn't look at the, you know, property at that time, I didn't have any reason to, but it. It went a period of time between when there were no chicken houses. To then their business expanded, well, can we put a trailer, can we store one too temporarily before we move it to somewhere for a hurricane or something, and then that just grew over time. But I don't I don't have an exact timeframe. Not sure. The the violation I would say that came from code enforcement was earlier this year, I want to say in the February to March timeframe. Thank you.
I'll make a motion that we approve. P 23 0139.
So this passes six to one. This time, of course, this does come up before the board of commissioners. September. We didn't get to address any questions. Given that we've taken care of those two.